Let's get this pre-session started. Um, let's do a, let's do a roll call. Suzie.
So Suzie and all the parents?
Yeah, just, just Suzie.
Or just, oh, do we have to?
Yeah.
It's been recorded, so.
Okay, so.
Is it?
No.
There's no reason for it to be.
Yeah.
The bus service.
Yeah.
Erica's taking that.
Okay, so do we want to do attendance, or?
No, just say your name.
Who's here?
Suzie.
Oh, Sean Roy.
Aaron Rodriguez.
Okay. Marcia Martin.
Martin.
Eugene May.
Harold Minus.
Okay, great. Let's go around giving updates on my update list there right there. Do you want to talk to Starbuck too?
I'm interested in terms of board's commissions and what we need to report.
Okay.
The crab, I mean, just, the crab is keen to see something happen with a bad question. They're mindful that if there's, if there's not a better organizing effort on behalf of whatever we decide, if we decide to put something on the dot, they have little chance, as you see. And I did suggest to them that if they're going to come and speak to us at some point in time, we're going to end up being in the process of having to assess some priorities. Some things are going to be more important than others, even within the recreation package, and that they ought to be really clear on like their priorities out, Mike and first, or last. And, and so that, you know, because if they know somebody will be up for them. In fact, if that's somebody that they're for, maybe they won't be able to voice it.
Marcia. Okay. Well, my efforts with my boards have focused mainly on whether they would have enough applicants for the next round of interviews, as in full or in seats. And a lot of the ones that I, that I said on have these problems. The purpose of me, um, they are all trying hard to improve. The airport is by any means where it can't no quorum.
Oh.
Yeah. And that is, you know, that's, that's how, that's how that is. So, uh, I need to check with Dawn. I didn't actually get that done today, because we've got two more days. And that's it? And that's it? I, I, I don't know. Maybe, maybe one of the staff persons, people in this room, none of whom are from the city boards office, could tell us whether the application period could be extended.
I don't know. I don't think there's anything that their events has forced them to do.
You know, we let, we let Mary Lynn be late with her last application, and, and we all felt sad for her and let her apply later. She's on the board.
Did you mail Dawn and get an answer back?
Yeah, I will, I will tell Dawn to let you all know that's me if I get an answer to that.
Yeah.
It has to be right away.
Yes.
It has to be right away.
Yeah.
I.
It comes if you decide to extend it. I don't.
Today was, was a weird day. I was suffering the aftermath of the library loss today.
So the application to do that, right?
Yeah.
So we have to decide maybe online at the majority?
Well, if you are okay with us extending that, I would think that. Yeah, me, Jean and I can also see whatever those procedures.
I just have a question. It's not because the board's not full, it's because they don't show up to the meeting, is that right?
No, the airport advisory board didn't have enough applicants to completely seat every number.
Okay.
All the, to fill all the seats. Last time they were down a seat, and then someone got employed because of growing pains, I think, and resigned. So they're down, it was only ever a five or six seat, they were small. And being down to the old age, it's really easy to get. All it takes then is one person to be sick.
Does, does everybody in here want to extend?
I would like to see it extended, I mean, and then just make a big push to.
Yes. Sure, are you okay?
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
Eric?
Yeah, it's fine. But sometimes historic preservation has some form issues, but it's fully seen it, so.
Oh, they just don't show up?
They don't show up.
Interesting.
Yeah, that's, yeah, and that's not uncommon, especially from right about now until September. It's not uncommon to see vacations in different places impacted.
Thanks, Marcia. We would have known that if you.
Yeah, you know, some, some work, like historic preservation, nobody's, it's not very threatening to be in major processes if they don't have a quorum, especially over the summer. On the other hand, water, airport advisory, I would think land zoning has had, has failed for them.
It would have been a bad thing. It's very rare for P and Z not to be a quorum.
Yeah. But I think CAV is, is right at the edge of, you know. I don't go there because it's not my board, but I have friends on CAV.
I would say slightly different as advisory boards versus commissions. I mean, historic preservation and P and Z have specific functions.
Yes.
Decision-making functions, so.
Yes.
Speaking of which, how's P and Z doing?
P and Z didn't meet last month, but they meet tomorrow, so. Historic had a retreat, and then in the follow-up, which was just a week after the retreat, had a meeting where they finished up with some thoughts that didn't get to their retreat, which will, at some point, I'm sure, be coming to us as far as what they consider cleanup in the Land Valdeco, or moving also historic preservation to the Land Valdeco, which we're currently seeing some different section of the museum at the time of the meeting. And so they're, they're looking at those kinds of things, as well as defining suggestions that they'll make to City Council concerning demolitions. As, they, they're looking at some other things too, but I think they, they kind of got some cold water splash laws and some ideas they had. As far as folks who are not already designated, and either incenting them to designate or forcing them to designate, or whatever the other. And like I said, I think there's some cold water splashed on them as far as that's concerned. A lot of media meets, not this week, but next week. And so they have some exciting things going on, but nothing else. You know, I don't think, as far as I know, that they've set one new exact directive yet. I'm not very, I'm very, I'm very lively, I'm very passionate on that. Let's see. Community Solutions has a meeting on the 26th, 1:00 in the morning, and that's specifically the Colorado 119 Subcommittee of Community Solutions. So my mind's generally back over, if that's what you mean, so.
Seems like Colorado 119 has been discussed and discussed and.
We discussed.
Pretty much. Well, I mean, it is, it seems continually come down to finishing the funding and finishing the stuff.
Exactly.
And, you know, I've heard, we're starting to hear more public input, as you can imagine, it's, it's both sides of the story, so we're very excited for the pathway that could go potentially down the middle. I would say it's fine the way it is, which I don't disagree with, but, but. And then, you know, we all have our opinions on bus traffic and these. So.
So the 119, finishing that depends, depends on the raise rate. We don't need the raise rate.
Right, right, and, um, we did get the separate from Colorado 119 when I spoke with Congress in D.C., the earmark for our microtransit was granted. The earmark for our, our water system was not, because apparently that was too woke.
Water?
Yes, I know, I know, I don't, I don't quite understand.
But microtransit is not.
Microtransit is not woke, but our water improvements were too woke. And he thinks that there's another process that he might be able to use to help us with our, our water system.
So what's a woke?
Well, you, you know.
I understand what woke is.
Yes.
Yeah, I said, I don't understand. He, he, he had a hard time explaining it himself. He's like, well, they didn't want to put any earmarks in that were explicitly woke, clearly. How does that apply?
Anything that's well environmentally.
That was, I'm just relaying what Tom just said.
Good plan.
He, he thinks that there's another mechanism, a different thing that he possibly could have tried.
It's probably, it's probably related to the fact that, of, of the cause of ruckus.
Probably. Well, and, you know, so I'm sure, I don't know what people in Arizona are saying in the press.
Well, Arizona's I know, and it was California.
Yeah, it was California that was the only one that it was.
Various, yeah, various commonest people in their opinions, so.
Interesting. Sure.
Okay. Well, interesting thing, the Consortium of Cities has moved their meeting from the 6th of April to the 26th of April. And so I'll be going to that, that's also the same night as Archab. And so I'll just get back with Charlie and me regarding what happens there. I think he's the actual voting person on that, on the Archab. So let me just get a report from him. The interesting thing with the Consortium of Cities is on March 31st, there was a minimum wage meeting, and Sandy couldn't make it, so Becky Doyle attended with me. And it was just kind of one of those things where they, they would like to keep talking about, you know, having a minimum wage here in Boulder County, where Longmont and Boulder and the surrounding others, communities all came up with a decisive minimum wage, whether that's $18 an hour, $19 an hour. I think it's a little bit, uh, just kind of out of step with looking at the, at the economic environment right now. And it's hard to tell some of the folks in Boulder, you know, when you get all the things that Longmont has done to bring the cost of living down for, for your folks as well as Longmont has with, you know, having Wi-Fi and the next light, and picking up our own trash and collection and all the other things. Then maybe they should come back and talk to us then, but they're not really listening to those things.
It, it sounds, I want to ask a question. Have they gotten away from the state statute in terms of intent? Because the, the state statute was, that basically you can have, declare yourself a region that's going to have a minimum wage, which is a good idea.
I don't think anybody's against that.
Right.
Idea.
And, but the other thing about the statute is that it, it only limits how much the minimum wage can go up in, in a particular period. I think it's a year.
Yeah.
So I don't know.
And it can't, and that's, they did talk about that.
Yeah, and so, you know, I mean, a, a sense of minimum wage for here is about $18 an hour in the sense that.
And that's why, that's why I use that figure.
Yeah, but that figure is way above what the statute lets you put in. It's going to be, you know, 13 or something, which means there's no point in not doing that thing.
Yes, well, see, the, the, the end is just getting council direction on that. And I don't want to give them, you know, a solid yes, or a feeling like that, that I can give them a solid yes without having it come as a directive from council. And I'd happily do whatever anybody wants to have me pass forward. But then on the 24th, is, is the, is a group that would like to talk about this, and it's a union group and other things like that, but I've been a little hesitant.
Minimum wage coalition.
Yeah, I've been a little hesitant to, to attend that meeting without any, just being there as a, as a warm body. I guess I can do that.
I, I, I signed up to attend, because I was initially in the steering committee. And so I kind of left off, and it didn't seem like we were really meeting regularly, and then it would kind of go off on tangents. But we did come up with a timeline of certain benchmarks. And one of the things, you know, is like, okay, well, I would feel better moving forward if we got this communication out to the, to stakeholders. So, you know, making community groups and have, getting eliciting input from businesses to determine, you know, is this right for our community, is it, you know, to have that buy-in factor.
Yeah.
And, um, yeah, and then, and then it was like, okay, we're going to set up another meeting, and nothing happened.
So didn't we say that we were going to have Jeff come to council? Is he part of the coalition?
Yeah, I, I, that was the email I sent on to you.
Yeah.
And it's Jeff.
Calhoun.
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 Calhoun, Calhoun, yeah.
And so I'm, I'm, at, at that point, he never.
Well, he left me a message today about a different subject, so I'll look back and see if that's.
He was with AFL-CIO, right?
Yes, he was with the Boulder.
Labor Council.
Yeah. I think it was a lot of them, okay. So, okay, we'll follow up on that.
Who's on, who?
Jeff.
Yeah. He's on with the AFL-CIO?
Well, I'm not sure if it's AFL-CIO, Tim, or if it is the Boulder coalition, the Union coalition, that he was.
Because I'm on, I'm on Zoom call with him and somebody else before I got this.
Oh, ask him.
But I know this.
Ask him.
But I, I, because I can't, whatever the.
The 24th?
Yeah.
I, I couldn't do that. I've got something else to, so they'll say.
Oh, good.
Yeah. Oh, she, my question. So then, then Art and Public Places, they're just putting in different installations, starting, it looks like tomorrow, and it's Saturday. And you've probably already seen, if you've been down to the museum, you've seen the wings wall there. That's kind of a cool installation.
Yes. I did have a question about Sean's previous subject, because it, it seems to me like they're having trouble figuring out how they're, the consortium of cities is, is, they're having trouble figuring out how they're supposed to interact with the cities. It seems to me that they should be, they should agree on a proposal or a resolution, and then send it out to the cities, to the different city councils.
That is.
Yeah.
So would you send me an email about what you're thinking, so that I would?
I will do that, yes.
Yeah, Erie will be the interesting one, I guess.
And I, I liked when we met, it was the Erie representative, Acta Light Van Say, I think in regard to, you know, be more pragmatic, whereas Boulder.
Yeah, well, he was, he and I, the same thing, yeah, the Erie guy and I, we were talking the same language, and, you know, like.
But, yeah, I feel like it was more pragmatic.
He was really kind of like, you guys don't quite, you, you keep getting the horse out of the barn, but you don't have anything hooked to it, and you don't know what you're doing, and, and everything. But Marcia, if you'll send me what you're thinking, that way then I'll, I'll.
And there was a community meeting, I can't remember when, was it in December? I remember I joined it via Zoom, but it was not, but it wasn't, it wasn't very well attended, considering it's all of Boulder County.
Well, I think it was just trying to get things off the rails, and it wasn't during the holiday season, so.
But you can understand my hesitancy to go, jump on something on the 24th, just to be there and go, and have them put you on the spot and say.
Well, no, if they ask me anything, I'll be honest.
Yeah, well, that was true.
And I will also share my frustrations with being part of the steering committee.
Okay.
And, you know, not on the floor, but.
No, it's, it's really against it.
Well, there's just like two.
So it was just two things?
Yep, three things, four things.
Yeah.
Okay, Suzie?
So Library Board, Museum hasn't met yet. I realize they shifted their meeting to the earlier date. I have, and, yeah, so it was off, so we haven't met. Same thing with you as council. But the library, I don't know if you all saw the, I saw that it did come out, the Library Board recommendation for supporting the library. Yeah. Yeah, so, and there was a lot of discussion around that, that PDCO community study. There was also discussion around, you know, their roles. And so they're really trying to figure out as a board, what would their roles and expectations be, and, and how they could do it that would best serve the library. So I, I really see that it's a group that has the library at the heart of everything, you know, so that commitment to that. So I thought that was really, that's good. Um, the other, so, and this was, the advisory board, or a couple of people that I spoke with, were really excited about this idea. So remember when the students from Silver Creek paint?
Yes.
And Marsh Rooney?
Yes.
He was talking about the mural that he wanted to paint in Silver Creek.
He did paint?
No, it was not. It got shut down.
They made him paint it.
I thought he painted it.
He said they did. Yes, they made it over. So it was not, it was not allowed to stay. So he's looking at, and I've been in contact with Carrie Adams, and looking at, you know, possibly do, do we network maybe in the parking lot of the library, or in some space, because I actually saw the, the mural, and so it was.
Was it good?
It looks good because your awards are probably.
So that's what we were, that's what we were talking about. So, you know, maybe that could be an option of getting that, connecting them with Arts and Public Places.
So, so would he go and present, talk to other places? Is that the way it works? Eric?
No, Sean. Yeah, no, yeah, I believe that is the way, or see, he just has to put in a, get on the agenda, explain what he's interested in doing, and we can certainly help him get on the agenda.
Who should reach out to?
Well, since you've been contacting, do you want to?
I've contacted Marc, I've contacted Carrie for another issue, and that.
And just, and send it on to.
That would be great.
Yeah, just let me know who I can.
Angelina Pearl.
Is there an explanation in the bio for this, or what?
No, but I don't want to draw out assumptions, but I kind of know the personal offering, so.
Personal opinion?
Personal opinion, so, yeah, but, no. I think it was explained to Carrie and Marsh, but, but, yeah, he was, he was devastated.
Thanks for following up on that. I think it really shows coming to council and working, it shows how, how it can work by reaching out. Great VR. So, um, do you have anyone?
So it was the library. The council. Oh, I'm on, I can't come to the board. So, no, I'm the.
I gave you the order.
I've been, no, 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 sorry. I'm the alternate for the Consortium of Cities. And, oh, and I can go to Archab. They're still virtual, right? Yeah, I, I can do that if you need to go to the Consortium.
Oh, that works, yeah.
All right, send it to you now.
Yes, please.
So, now, LMAF, I can't go to LMAF because it conflicts with L E D on Mondays. So we're going to have a meeting at noon in the, Monday.
So I, I would be interested, I don't know if you have anything on that?
I'll email you.
Yeah, email me, we'll figure out.
Is that the second one of the month?
I think it is, yeah.
It conflicts with L.
Okay. Oh, NLC was my other one, but they meet on Thursday, so.
Yeah. Okay, well, Charlotte, okay, I'm having, I'm kind of on the network for some, for some. So tomorrow, the youth summit press release is going to come out, and that is the summit that we're holding for the district stadium dollars. And staff has done an incredible job, especially Brad Packard, who is the moneyworth. So I can't wait for you to see what she did. She did the whole video and the presentation geared only to kids. So they should be all right. We are accepting virtual input, or accepting in-person input, emails, snail mail, anything that they want. So that should be attended, we will, it's going to be on Saturday, May 13th. So also, Gail Rademaker and I testified Friday for the, excuse me, for the fourth plea bill. And it was, we went down because we were supposed to testify on third. And we had time to go to lunch, because there was a lot of Jewry Manning in Hollywood, so it wasn't on time. And about 3:30, we decided to hold. So we signed up remotely, and we testified in 8:30 at the. So that was a long. And I also testified alongside Kimberly McKee, McKee, Bill, that they wanted, after 50 years, to present an ad hoc. There was a lot of discussion around it. To be honest, there was a lot of discussion that was muted with me, because for me, to this, very complicated, everything went alike, which was early last year, and she's in the music center. So we did that. Also, I've been working with staff, it shouldn't be as far as anybody that I've been working with homelessness, and have been for eight years. So after I got elected, I talked to Harold about what I, you know, my vision would be of campus for homelessness and stuff. So knowing how overloaded staff has obviously, that I would be willing to the small group people to do all the research and bring it back to staff. So we've been working together basically for a year and a half on this, which brought about the tour that we, you were all invited to, that Suzie and I went to our, what do you call it?
Delores.
The Delores Project in Denver, which will come back to council at some point this, Harold's, Friday. But the research that we've been doing, hopefully will come back in May. I think we're pretty much done to tell what we've been doing, and ask for input, et cetera, et cetera. At this point, I just want you to know what we're doing there. The other thing is that Earth Day is Saturday. I will be working in Clarkson, Tennessee, part of that. But the other thing is that, I cannot pronounce this man's name. Harold, you met with him in Erie, the Nepalese, I can't remember their name, and he'd have to be a voice, you know. I listened to it three times, and I still can't.
Yeah, I can't remember that.
At any rate, they have this incredible celebration that I've gone to for years, but I can't because I'm working the Earth Day. There is going to be about 700 people there, and he would like to have some, I called today instead of doing. He would like somebody from council to go, it's called the Erie, Johnny Goose is going to be there. There will be a lot of mayors there, it's huge celebration. And it's not just Nepalese, it's basically people from N D R, many different sets. So if anybody would like to go, let me know. I would like so, Harold, for representation on that, if you're interested.
You can put that into your email.
Okay, it is Saturday, so he wants to see me invite this week. We also have Light the Night Saturday.
But she's also, they're doing a thing on Thursday.
There, I'm sorry, it's not Saturday, it's Thursday. It's called Light the Night. You haven't been there this Thursday?
Yes, it's at Front Range.
Well, there are two of them, that's why.
Oh, maybe that's it.
Yeah. Light the Night is the one that we, that was at the park in Denver.
Um, that is National Night Out, six hours worth.
Somebody's going to have to do something. Okay, at any rate, you can research that, it's all over the place. So that's about it, all I have now. I'll continue with the work. I am going to talk to, I didn't know a lot about the centers, and about changing the way we do transportation finance, because it passes it forward. Talked to Harold about this, I've talked to the, like, Dennis Johnson, Eric Davidson, the new guys at Jira Bay Centers, Sonia Warkes, Oliver and Karen Bird. I would like to visit to which Dennis Johnson is. I would like to visit to which Dennis Johnson is very much for is a venue tax. No, I said it wrong. A venue fee instead of asking for another tax on transportation. At the venue fee, we'd be in an amount, I would like to start with a dollar and then a quarter. On every seat, it was sold, every Rockies, Denver Broncos, Avalanche, Stop Show, Denver Performance.
And again, hotels.
Hotel rental cars, yes. Because we're not going to be using those roads. And we cannot get a transportation tax passed. There's an interim transportation group that moves in summer. It will be four sessions that needs to discuss what could be, I emailed the group. They said I was not being part of it. None of them at this point have emailed back because the session, they don't have time to discuss anything else. So just, I personally would like your input on that on some level. Because we cannot continue to not have transit and say we don't have any. I would use those sources. So that's what I'm going to work with transportation, the mercury, instead of working against them. Just say, let us help you figure it out. So.
Sounds like a good idea. We made it to that. Whatever happened with the meetings between Hart City and cities?
Yeah, I'm not working, so, on the 20th, giving dates mixed up. 22nd or the 27th, they're going to have some regional meetings in terms of a call for potential partnership projects. And then they have a relatively short duration in terms of who you can submit the projects. And then they will begin moving through what projects they want to partner on. So Phil's aware of it. And the city information we put together, Johnny Goose on the microtransit request is what we put into this. And they are aware that when I met with them, Johnny Goose has, he got pushed into the actual next phase of this. And so they were interested in it. And then we dig into the actual projects. The key thing that came out of this is they're willing to look at a financial partnership in terms of how it works. And they're, you know, had some really good conversations about that. They know that this is, they're looking for creative projects. And they know that you may not get the information that you need in a year or so. So they're willing to ride it out longer to see how it works. The key piece in the process, and frankly for Johnny Goose's points too, because there are federal funds that are shipping down. Procureable pieces are going to be something that everyone has to focus on. It's just not ideal going through this application process because you can misstep, you can misstep pretty quickly on these public sources if you don't really make sure you're in line for procurement processes. So that's going to be coming out. And Phil's ready for that meeting. And we have to submit our microtransit application.
And to that point, I have been talking to Kimberly McKeat for L-D-A because I know that you've all heard about the parking issues over at Hotel. And so it's real, all the parking was settled. So she's concerned, actually not necessarily that there won't be a parking, but the attitude toward it. So we've been talking, well, actually for three years, but I think important to now, in order to have the transit for next year when we start construction of that hotel, to have some kind of a transit system now, starting with some people who are used to using it. Just bringing people who, who say they can't walk to downtown, oh, there's no parking. So I talked to Sarah Ferguson, Jennifer Ferguson. I wondered first, she's interested in being part of that conversation. But I had to refer Phil, Kimberly, and Jennifer to discuss and see what's possible. There are a lot of, there are a lot of issues we have. But I want to help Kimberly because this is huge for her to have that pocket, that money work on. And Front Range Passage to Rail District has submitted their application for the S-D-P Source Delivery Queen. And that, there's $500,000 that we applied for. And that will be decided in August. So we need that $500,000 because if we get it, then basically FRA says you're in. And they will help us all the way through because they have to agree to our services too. So that's what we're working on. And hopefully get that $500,000 to report. About Kimberly's, Kimberly's issue. What about looking for Frank Brule or just extending the on-demand services that we have? Well, that's going to be a part of the conversation. But she's the one who said that, she would like to be talking to Jennifer. Maybe she's part of the downtown. Her office is there and something with Mia. Mia has a reputation for what it does. She wants it to be an priority. I wanted a rooftop trolley, but they cannot give a financial plan. I asked them to recount, still up here. So she said, talked to Jennifer, she, she really does have a little. So that was the first foray. So we don't know where it's going to be. So that's all about.
The challenge on that is, is it's not so much the people that are working. So like, we know, we live, our staff to St. John's, out of that parking lot. It's to consumers. The on-demand is, is the challenge. And I've seen the parking study and there's enough parking spots. There's just not enough parking spots close to some of these places. And so, but I know that they're working and trying to figure it out. Because it really is that.
Yep.
It's, it's that I'm driving in to go eat downtown. And, you know, I don't catch a lift two blocks over versus calling and setting up that call ride. So it's a slight difference.
Well, at some point, then it'd be wonderful to have a trolley system going up and down that little section there to get any people back up and back and forth.
Well, the other point for me also is when we get our transit station built, 25 and 26, we're hoping that they'll be used to it. They'll know. So real fast, ethics committee, what I've given you, I pulled out, and I sent it to you via email or phone call, is the Fort Collins ethics thing. I just pulled out a portion of it, I think pertaining to us. So the very, so what is that? We discussed that. And I want to know if the consensus is that the only thing we can do is censure. Because we talked about, you know, as far as holding people accountable once they were found to have been in, violated. Something that the only thing we can do without being a charter change or is to censure. Do we agree that that's the way we should go? Should we make a recall, which we have to go to the charter to change?
I think it's a bad form to go for a recall with the people that are on here. I think that really is, should be something that community members get riled up about and do if they really want to do. The thing is like, Eric Dorn stopped kind of making it comedians and finally the board kind of pulled him aside. The council finally pulled him aside and said, Eric, you're real. I think that was the first step towards having, you know, kind of in this direction where you're going. But I think he finally read the writing on the wall and decided he had to resign because they're just, he just didn't have a bandwidth to do anymore.
Right.
And so we're hoping that somebody makes choices if that's the case.
Okay. So I've read through the whole thing and the places, and this is just my opinion. If you disagree or you want to change. I think it would be easier for me to go through it first and say, this is what I see. So the very first one is, do we have anything under Section 2, I-68? I also think I told Eugene today, this really isn't rocket science. Other cities have already known this. They've vetted it, they've looked at the rules, I mean, the state statutes, the... So if we can adopt some of what they did, maybe tweak it or, and then give it to Eugene and say, is this, is this going to work?
And this section that you're talking about here is, is just a, this section we already have in place.
Pretty much.
And is there some spot, you know, I know that each of us, whether you came in like I did with a, and got up to speed on some things, working with Harold and others about things, or came in in groups of two or so.
Yeah.
To get some training as well. What, is there anything that is kind of like a written sort of document that says, this is how I will act, besides the oath we take of saying that you'll, you know, uphold the, you know, the constitution and those things like that? Is that, is there anything that kind of spells out ahead of time? That might be nice to have in front of people to say, remember when?
Yeah, so I think there are two things here. First of all, I think that the ethics might be in ordinance. But what you might be talking about is decorum and rules of procedure. I mean, this is how we act, to me, is professionally, morally, I call it ethical as well. But it seems like everything I've read pertains to finance, is what we're talking about, ethical in our government. But if there's something else that you think should go under, yes, no. So, so the other thing I put on here of what we've already discussed are frivolous complaints. And that I addressed, they addressed, actually, but it's easy to tell. And I want to see if that's what you think is better.
Joe, am I getting control of this document? Because it needs a context. So the, like, who are the actors here? So it sounds like frivolous complaints. Is this frivolous complaint by one council member against another? Or by a resident?
Anyone.
Okay, anyone.
So. So basically, I put it in here, and this was just my off-the-cuff feeling, is that frivolous complaints might be handled by council. And that we just mediated, you know, like whether the council is going to take that closer, whether it's a person from the residents that we see them, they've come up to RTVH and they're railing about somebody and we think, we don't have time to talk to them now. But we say, you know what? If you really think that's a complaint, you can go to the side and draw up that complaint. And then we'll talk to you about that. Rather than, it shouldn't go to staff. Staff should not monitor us or regulate us. We're self-regulating bodies in this state. So what do you think about that idea?
Where's the frivolous complaint part? My complaint? Oh, it's very.
Last name?
Yes, it's I-V, the second. So what, you know, Fort Collins once said is that the alleged violation, even if it's true, is minor in stature, fails to justify the use of public resources to investigate or prosecute. It's a waste of time. But it is, for me, it still needs to be addressed. Whether it's one council person or another council person. If it's the residents complaining about a council person.
I think that opens you up to a slippery slope of may not be staff's resources inside of them. We also have finite resources inside of these council rooms. So to address every single complaint.
Well.
We're also.
You're right.
Because if they know, there's certain, well, okay, I'm thinking possibly there's certain members of the community who would take advantage of subject to.
Okay.
So.
Yeah, but what if on a form that we had two different forms? One of them would be not that expensive, et cetera. Something that was quite serious. And then another form about someone's actions and the way they acted toward them or what they said. We could have on that form, like a dropdown menu, does choose one of these. And if it isn't in there, then that's, it's not working really well.
Well, speaking is probably the only one, this session, that has been the target of the frivolous complaints. I see lots of problems with that because the frivolous complaint is based on 40,000 pages of junk science.
Well, you know, I mean. But it doesn't matter, that's your opinion, and I don't want to get into that.
Well, that's exactly my problem.
No, because that, they were accusing you of like financially gaining. What evidence, on what grounds? So I think if someone's going to file a complaint, they need to have the evidence.
Exactly.
In fact, they just can't say, well, I think.
They just, exactly, exactly.
And it's, and in fact, what they did was they moved the standing, their standing argument, you know? So, yeah, they're willing to admit that I don't have a financial interest. Or at least they're willing to admit that I might be able to prove that I don't. But they, so they now, now they're defining a conflict of interest as, well, I like them. Well, it would make me happy to see the city happy, have it up.
So they think that we have to like everybody in town?
No, 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 like smart eaters.
Oh, like, oh, okay, I was going to say.
The thing is to be a floor, like, we need 200 valid signatures before we take it seriously. You know, and I'm not meaning that really as a joke, as in to disincentivize everybody just getting any frivolous complaint that we want.
It doesn't take to be the person I counsel, you know?
But that's my point about the floor. Rather than having, like, if somebody goes to Harold, he can say, well, fill out this form. But on the form, if we decide you need 200 signatures before this can come before.
It rises to a hearing.
And it's a hearing of maybe two people, to your point, to then have that. You know, unless it takes to get a large council member on, about 50, 50 signatures. If that's what it takes to get somebody on, then, then it's going to take a bit of effort on their part to find that many signatures in town.
That's right, they have to put out the effort.
Yeah. I, I like the idea of having a, you know, a percentage specific. Or a, you know, why did we come up with 50 signatures for getting a council on, somebody nominated a council? Why not 200? Why not, you know, a percentage of the community?
That's a good idea. So that, any other ideas? Because we talked about if we have not a board, but at least one person that is reviewing the valid complaint, what about the frivolous? And I think we, those should be two separate forms to fill out. So someone says, what do you think, Kim? I know you're taking this all in.
Um, I'm still not certain what brought it to the council. Well, in the time that I'm on this council, there's only one, one experience that is irrelevant. So it would be helpful to me. And I appreciate it, but those are, but this is going to be a whole lot of time. I'd be curious to know how many times Fort Collins is actually utilized, whatever, whatever they're doing with their, with their system, with their policy. I'm willing to do whatever, but I, I'm not going to invest a whole lot of time. We're intellectual horsepower.
I don't want anybody to spend a whole lot of time. And I think this is pretty easy, to be quite honest.
Doesn't sound like it.
I don't understand the distinction between things that have signatures and things that don't. I think everything should be a signature. So, and we're not talking about emails and say, like, no, someone's on the table, they can talk to us.
No, no, no.
The worst section is, I, I think it's, I think it's gonna be there, it's like, when I was a council the first time. We get to, we get to C M L, we're voting on something, we all sit here and the mayor makes, it's ready to, to vote on the thing that we're agreeing on with bylaws for C M L. And all of a sudden, you know, all of us are there, we all agree on it. And then the mayor at that time goes like this and puts in that and I look over his shoulder. And he's not voting along the lines of what we agreed on. That's something that would fall into this right here. If it's outrageous at the time, it'd be outrageous for anybody. So that's the, that's the sort of thing that we don't want.
It's not defined in what's the, I understand that somebody didn't carry out what.
Well, that, that, that was.
What's the ethical breach?
The ethical breach is that we, uh, we'd all agreed, it was something that, that we as representatives decided that we were gonna do. And then to have that person go and do that on the side here, where we are all supposed to be on the same page.
So the ethical breach in this case was that somebody voted their conscience.
No, they voted a, a, well, I guess you could say voted their conscience or voted the opposite way of what was good for the community.
What did their conscience?
Is that, yeah, but it is, does that rise to like an ethical?
And that, see, that kind of thing.
And that's what I think also needs to be defined because there are some people who would think that it falls under ethical. But it's, it's really, in the end, you know, we as, you know, we could vote how we choose to vote and.
Well, we do that all the time, here.
Yeah, we do it, we do it.
But that was kind of, I always thought that was kind of a different one where we had come together.
If you really felt that way, then it would go to some kind of an arbitrator or it would not be.
To tell you to write, so rather than us.
Does this rise to the level?
And to your point, that may be the case, I don't know.
I might see that as a principle, personally, right, you need a breed and here's the principle. If somebody would turn around and say, yeah, well, I voted my conscience, and you give them, tell me what that is. I don't know what I'd say to that, other than, yeah, I guess that's what we all do. But I think it was an unprincipled act. But I, you know, what are you gonna do with that in terms of a formal process?
It's just where, where does that stop? You know, on other.
I'm curious who decides what is or what's not frivolous?
I think too, like, like if there is something, like, let's say we had an executive session and then somebody shared something that, you know, we had all agreed to hold confidential. Would that be something that rises to the level of unethical?
Absolutely.
So then, yeah, and so that's, you know, looking at those kinds of, because I think that might be something that would happen more often than any other kind of, like, community member or complaint.
Yeah.
I think, I, that's the only thing I can think of, that that might be something that would happen.
See, I think there's a way to shut down complaints or community members just by saying, this doesn't work, so we'll give them any kind of mediation.
I just based up what we've heard in council chambers recently, I wish, I wish I was in the process to.
Well, yeah, but they can say whatever they want, but if they want to complain to staff about someone. Staff should be able to say, you know, fill out this form. And, you know, we're not gonna discuss it with you. And that's part of what I wanna do, because they've been involved this year in, in some dispositions and they shouldn't have to.
Staff, that's.
Well, that's what I've heard. So anyway, I've heard, I'd like to hear, well.
See, I'm in the dark. Complaints about council members, the staff's thing, resolved.
That they've heard, whether they.
Were you talking to a resident off the lid?
I don't know, no. But they should be able to say, you know, we have a process, if you think this, if you would like to follow up, this is a point, you need to go off, period.
I guess what happens with the form.
I think it's not uncommon for us to say they're self-regaining bodies. I've heard it said that a few times, but.
And I think with a lot of people, the very depth that they have to actually do something, they don't do it.
Yeah, I do kinda like the idea of having to get residents' signatures, at least a certain amount that takes to take it to that. I think that almost needs to be a component of it. We're gonna continue to pursue this, it has to have some sort of effort on the ones that are making that.
Let's, let's, can we use some real examples?
I don't know if there's any thing specific other than, you know, you take Marcia's situation here, you know?
I think, there is an example that, that might fit this, that isn't about Marcia. Although Marcia was a problem, but so was I and so was, the, the parking on around West Side Tavern.
Oh, yeah.
Right, I mean, there was this whole narrative about council members having some agenda to put somebody out of business and do it through, through parking. Now, I can see that as a, for a business. In fact, that business owner was trying to generate a petition or, you know, a, a, so is, so is that a situ, is that an example of?
It is an example.
How this might be.
Exactly, it's.
And then they have to take the effort to do it and everything with it.
Yeah. Well, there was also a, I won't name it, but there was a resident that was trying to get a rest in trouble as well. So to have him, you know, just, because he complained to me personally, I didn't involve him.
Yeah, well, we wouldn't get involved in that.
No, I mean, not at all, and I said, you need to make a complaint if that's true, I can, I won't.
But that was a resident planning a business, about a business.
About rest, yeah. So.
You know, I think.
It went back and forth and back and forth, but I think we have a process. We can stop some of that and say, you know, if we didn't have it mediated, you need to fill out this form with your complaint, what is your complaint? Because it needs to be hearsay.
There should be a signature threshold, if the, the person doesn't get to decide whether it's frivolous and just almost.
And timeframe, and, and timeframe for collection and the timeframe.
Sure, it's time limit. Yeah, it's like a timeframe, you mean a statute of limitations.
Well, yeah, time, no, I'm saying like, you know, from the point of, of pushing send. And you getting the, the documents printed, you have to get, you know, your signatures within two weeks.
Yeah, that was, that was addressed in here at some point, it said thirty days.
Thirty days, whatever.
I still be curious, if, and I, if Fort Collins could provide some examples of how, what's happened and how this applied, that would be really useful. To see it as, just as a practical, so it's not hypothetical, theoretical, or telechondro.
I'm, I'm with you, Tim, I just think it's, I, I can see a portion of it.
Yeah, you know, we're becoming a bigger city, we don't wanna have, you know, wishy-washy and kind of, you know, very laid-back rules of procedure. So I understand where you're coming from. I guess I'm, I'm just trying to kind of visualize revision, what that would look like in the end.
Well, we had it also with Bottom Farm, accusing the developer, it would be really nice.
Your deals, I'm hearing a lot of that.
Yes, it would be really nice to be able to sit down with them, some mediation and say, this is planning zoning. We, you know, they follow the code, they follow the zoning, these.
Why hasn't that happened yet?
Well, that's my point, but it probably is.
Bottom Farm, it's more of the, somebody was, there was an expectation of somebody to accuse themselves.
Well, we're all hearing different things and that's why I think that they could sit down and we had a specific idea of what.
We have a mediation department, team, and services, and housing revision and community services. I mean, we have that capacity, we have the expertise right now. But that wouldn't be, for us, that would be, I would think, staff or P and Z folks saying, if you have, if you wanna, if you got a dispute, we have a service to resolve that. Or you can get an attorney and file a lawsuit, but that doesn't really do that.
Yeah, like on the, on the West Side Tavern, we tried that. Both side or the other, number one, if you're.
I'm just saying, that got resolved.
It went away, because on one side or the other, we never agreed.
But I, that could have gotten, that could have escalated in some pretty interesting ways, if we had enabled it to escalate.
So I think in this document, as Mary's pointed out, almost everything relates to literally financial issues or, or something along that, which is specifically ethics-related issues, right? And so just like in P and Z, when they're appealing the decision of P and Z, they have to meet these three criteria, right? There should be the same thing. Does this complaint meet?
Yes.
A financial complaint? Does it meet, if, if no, we're just gonna throw it away.
Yeah, exactly, that's what.
Or we'll file it, but that's about it.
So if, if this was defined as conflicts of interest, that's one thing. And that's, I think that's pretty straightforward.
I, I, well, I think that's, as you said, it is in a, you know, issue of principle or is it issue of ethics? And I think that's where we're going now to delineate, and that will completely cut out frivolous complaints, so. Well, I still.
Yeah. Well, I think it's good opinion, that's why, that's why we.
It will make more of a drive, as far as the procedure, like, who determines if this is true as well? If it doesn't meet these.
Exactly, you said much better than that, that the form has to say it has to meet one of these three, these four, whatever.
And that should be regardless of whether it's a public or a fellow council colleague, I guess, making the accusation.
We know.